Have an on our agenda first, review and approval of today's agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Steve second, Amy all in favor. Okay, minutes. You have the minutes from the regular meeting on November twenty first, twenty twenty three. Does anyone have any additions or corrections for the minutes?
No, they're good.
They're good.
Okay, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, all of us. Great, thank you. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda items scheduled for review and or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address. B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this morning? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the fourth item on our agenda, the interim prisoner custody memorandum of understanding with Chief DeFreddo Rico.
Morning.
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 So this is a request to enter into an agreement with the Norwalk Police Department, the city of Norwalk, to temporarily house our prisoners while we're in our temporary headquarters location.
Does anyone have any questions for the chief?
Uh, yeah, I do. So in terms of, I know it says that reimbursement is with regards to, I think it was a state uh, requirements like so, when, at what point would we get a charge something?
If they had to perhaps feed
Okay.
The prisoner or any incidental things like that, but it would, they wouldn't charge us a fee.
For using the
Using their facilities, it would just be if, if they incurred an expense based on our prisoner, they, if the prisoner
Okay, so it's just, it's just a, you know, just transfer over of
Yes.
Payment.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm assuming this is, this is not an unusual situation. This is what police off, police department sector renovate, we do these.
Yeah, Greenwich did that when they renovated and that's standard procedure when, when you, uh, when your facility is unusable for whatever reason.
Okay.
To enter into agreement with a neighboring agency.
How frequently do we actually, you know, have someone that is in a cell for any length of time? And how long would someone be held?
For the most part, most of our arrests are bonded out pretty quickly, so we don't house them overnight, so to speak, or for longer than a few hours. Uh, we average, um, housing prisoners overnight approximately two times a month.
Okay.
Twice a month. And then, uh, they would be transported to court the next business day, the next day that the courts open. We would bring them to court for an arraignment and that those are just people that don't get bonded out.
And it's just an overnight thing typically, it's not
Typically, unless it's, unless it's over the weekend, unless it's Friday night into the, into the weekend, but typically it's an overnight, it's, it's to the next business day that the court is open.
Okay.
We would transfer somebody.
Right.
Any other questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, neither do I, so, um, I need a motion to approve, a request authorizing for selectman Deanna Carlson to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Norwalk for the Norwalk Police Department to accept and provide holding cells for New Canaan Police Department prisoners on an interim basis while the New Canaan Police Department building is closed for renovations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Might as well stay for the next one.
Okay. Um, next item on our agenda is the police facility renovations and environmental testing. And joined.
Hi, Jeff.
No worries. So I'm here today for the police department renovations project contract for the required professional services in order to abate the building's hazardous materials. Um, a quick history, Fosse and O'Neal has been working on as a consultant on the project since July of twenty twenty one. So in July twenty twenty one, they were contracted to perform hazardous material inspections, um, in design services. These services were to inspect the building for asbestos, lead paint, PCBs and mercury. And they created, um, bid documents to remove, to remove them, and that's since been bid out and is in the contract returner. Um, in twenty, in June twenty twenty three, they also formed a phase one environmental site assessment. The objective of that is to identify any, uh, recognized environmental conditions, uh, through historic records deep at deep or, um, identify, and they, through that, they've identified the location of previously removed underground storage tanks. So they, um, have also created a materials management plan, which is basically the plan that should we encounter any regulated materials during excavation, it's the process to, to remove them properly. So, uh, now that the place has vacated the, the building, so for the next phase for Fosse and O'Neal, um, they'll work with our demolition contractor to identify any additional hazardous materials that may be concealed within the building that we couldn't previously see, because it was an occupied police station and we couldn't demo the walls. Um, to monitor the project, they visually inspect areas, they oversee contaminant setups, they monitor the air, they clear the space when it's done. So that's what they do in a nutshell. Um, twenty seven thousand five hundred is the largest part of the cost. And that covers twenty five days of inspection services, which has been calculated based on the project schedule. And if we use less, we, um, you know, if we can use them most efficiently, we could possibly save some, some money on that particular item. And lastly, they compile all the required reporting, testing data, disposal records, and they create a report so that we have it um, in our files and everything is properly closed out with the, with deep and the EPA and everyone else that has an interest in hazardous material.
Okay.
That's it. Do you have any questions?
Questions. So Joe, the work that these guys are doing, the testing they're doing, this is kind of in terms of the police building, when we get through this testing, this is kind of our real unknown, right?
Mm-hmm.
So once we get, this, this is a really important part in terms of the cost of the project, in terms of, of their testing, and so this is going to take them how long we, how long are they doing this for? Was it a month? Did I say that right?
Five days.
In terms of your rolling, but in, so
Twenty-five days.
Yeah, so once we, if we get through this successfully,
Mm-hmm.
That's really important to project, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the good thing, there's been a couple of good things about this project is there was previous renovations, so a lot of the stuff was uncovered. Um, hopefully, um, again, we can't see be behind walls, so that's the, that's the problematic part.
So this is our look behind the walls.
This is just anything that would be concealed.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. And all of this is, it's all part of the budget.
So it's all part of the budget, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Um, the funds are available on the soft cost budget, and we also had an allowance should we run into any additional hazardous materials, because we do expect to run into additional hazardous materials, because the age of the building.
Yes. Yeah, it would be great if, uh, you know, we're just kept, oh, well, I'll be on the bit, but just that people realizes it's going through, uh, you know, when we, uh, what we find out, because, you know, as this comes through, that'd be good to keep us up to date.
We'll do.
The testimony.
Yeah.
Joe, were those tanks in the back of the building? Were they original, like, oil tanks, or were they?
There was, there was home heating oil type tanks, there was, and also historically, there was a, a building maintenance garage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there was also tanks for, for, um, petrol.
Fuel tanks.
Fuel tanks.
Okay. They've been pretty, they were pretty solid tanks though, right? I mean, we don't like
Well, they were solid tanks, so, well, they were pretty solid tanks. They were removed in nineteen eighty-nine, and there wasn't really a great history of their removal process, so that was why we, you know, identified where they were, and we, we know that, we know the areas so that, um, when we start to excavate in and around those areas, that, uh, we, we are, we are conscious that we may encounter some
Yeah.
Unsuitable soils.
And then inside the building, because we've renovated that before, and we've all talked over the years about the, the concrete nature of that building and the immovable walls at times, when we renovated the last time, didn't we go down pretty, almost to the walls, didn't we, or, or?
I don't think there was ever a renovation where you did a
A gut, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is, this is
We're exposing every surface in the building to the walls, so we expect to run into some items, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So there is also a shooting range in there. So there's, uh, some lead
Yeah.
Potential contaminants that.
And so like Amy said, it's, it's an important, it's gonna be a very important part of this whole project. We're, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
It's just the only unknown.
So that's, that's the
Yeah, yeah. So I just, I, I wanted to go back to the, the oil tanks in nineteen eighty-nine. I'm surprised there wasn't a soil test at that time. I mean, because at that point, we were pretty aware of sort of, um, so we don't have an oil test, I mean, a soil test from nineteen
There, there was one, there was some on, so there, the graves when they were removed, basically, they call them the, the graves, they did do some testing, but it was not filed with deep necessarily, so that they could say we found it, it was tested, it was tested with, with, you know, with these certain limits and it's fine. It was done, and I assume it was done properly, but that doesn't mean today's standards might be a little different, and we could run into, you know, when we're trenching through an old grave, an underground storage tank, could run into some, some old, old fuel spills.
Okay, I'll keep my fingers crossed. All right, so, um, does anyone, any other questions before I ask? So I would ask for a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public, sorry. Yeah, that's right. Approval, request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Fosse and O'Neal in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars plus a contingency of five thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars for a total cost of forty-three thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars. The project entails the professional services required for hazardous materials removal at one seventy-four South Avenue as part of the New Canaan Police Department renovation. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved on to you, Amy, since you're on.
There you go.
Steve, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. How's the move?
Getting there.
But, uh, so everyone should know that in the public that we're now at the new location.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's important.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was a lot of moving trucks.
Yeah. All right, next item on our agenda is the New Canaan Nature Center. Um, Bill Flynn, thank you for coming.
Just gonna share this for any of you.
Okay.
Yeah. There are plugs. Yeah. No, I got it. Yep. I will reference those at some point.
Thank you. Thanks. That's a lot of numbers there, Bill.
A lot of numbers.
I like numbers.
The highlighted ones are the important numbers. All right. Am I sharing now?
I see you soon.
See you soon. Presentation up behind the screen.
Don't worry, I'm getting there.
There we go.
All right, you guys see it?
Yes.
You guys good? All right. Uh, first, good morning, and thank you for having me. Um, it was recommended that before any budget cycles that I come in and give a little bit of background and also given up general updates on the nature center. Um, for everyone listening, my name is Bill Flynn, I'm the executive director of the New Canaan Nature Center. Congrats on all your new roles, and, uh, this is something that I do for Parks and Recreation also as a general update every year, so if that's something that the Board of Selectmen's interested in, also with Board of Finance and, um, Town Council, it's something I do for them at their request, and Tiger recommended that maybe, that should be on the docket every year, is just a general update. I work with Tiger, uh, and Public Works a lot on this, but maybe you all having more background would be prudent, so.
Be great.
Yep.
Um, we can plan on that moving forward. So today, uh, just a few general updates and then into two buildings, did you all, y'all got the memo that I had sent out? Um, the summary, so
Yeah.
That's mostly what we're talking about, so you all have the background. Um, something that, uh, I think is really important for the three of you and, uh, all the boards is why the New Canaan Nature Center and the town of New Canaan and where that relationship started. Um, it's one of our longest private-public partnerships that we have in New Canaan. In nineteen fifty-nine, Susan Dwight Bliss donated forty acres of her property to the town of New Canaan for purposes of an arboretum, nature center, bird sanctuary, pass of recreation-related purposes, or museum site, and that's word for word what it was donated for. Um, and that's what the deed, uh, stipulates, and in the first year of that deed, or that gift being accepted, the six private citizens formed the New Canaan Nature Center Association Incorporated, that's the nonprofit, and Town went into an agreement in that first year to be the designated agent to operate the nature center in accordance to the deed. And that was in nineteen sixty, and there's a letter of agreement that, uh, was written, it's one page, all of one page. And in nineteen seventy, it was updated and expanded to two and a half pages, but everything of, you know, how that relationship works is in there, so if, if you all haven't read that, I'd be happy to get you a copy, but certainly that's a very important piece moving, moving forward, so, uh, that's why we're here, and thank you, and I, I, you know, personally, uh, we are, have had a very good relationship with Town. Um, like I said, I've been the executive director for about six years, and in that time, um, we've worked really well with Public Works mostly, uh, to maintain the property and utilize it as in accordance to the deed. Um, just a brief overview, uh, just to show you all, uh, where our revenues come from. Uh, preschool is that big blue section, so that's fifty percent of, uh, our revenues are from our preschool. Also, our highest mission-driven program being that we're trying to connect people of all ages to the natural world, and no one's connected more than our preschool group who learns every day outside on our trails and in our, in our woods. Uh, the next section you've got is that orange is that summer camp, and that gray section is environmental education program, so three quarters of our business are made up of those, those three. The last quarter is special events, fundraisers, we have a luncheon, annual appeal grants, so that's, that's where our dollars come in. And at any point, if you have questions, just stop me and I'm happy to answer them. Uh, just for our programs, I know, uh, Town, especially on a town-owned property of, of how much of New Canaan residents are utilizing these programs? Our preschool of a hundred and forty-one students, eighty-six percent are New Canaan, uh, residents, our summer camp of seven hundred eleven campers was ninety percent this last summer, and our after-school, which, uh, Dr. Letzzi, uh, actually approached us to start an after-school program because the need was so high, and we started that, we're in our third year, and that's sixty students at a hundred percent, and they're actually bussed over from southeast and west, uh, directly to the nature center. So, uh, that's a picture of our after-school doing some birding and our oldest summer camp group going on some hikes, so we do get out the property sometimes. Um, the first, uh, well, before I move on into the buildings, was there any, just overview, any questions so far?
Is the after-school pretty much, uh, just grammar school? Uh, is it middle school?
It was designed to be K through four, and the signups were all K through two, and so that's what we've done so far. We're open to opening up to those older, and we've actually accepted some thir- third graders because they've been in the program for uh, first grade and second grade, and they still want to come back, so.
How, how long does it run after school? So what time?
Uh, right up in, uh, five forty-five, so it's specifically for working.
Yeah, that's great.
So, yeah. And again, that was something that we had tried before, but that busing from the schools is huge. I mean, that's what parents, they don't have to get them, you know, leave work to get them to us, so it's, it's huge. So on to the Audubon House, which is, uh, shown up on Public Works budgets the last two years, and it's been tabled the last two years. Um, it is, again, every building on the nature center property is a town-owned building, and so we're always working together to make future plans for them. Um, in the memo outlined, the arrangement, this is a strange building, because the Audubon Society of New Canaan was actually in control of it until two thousand fourteen. And that, when that organization dissolved, their rights transferred to the land trust, and they had a license. Uh, this is all from what I've read in the background, and that license gave them control of the building. And into that, since, so the town and the nature center have already really been controlled for, since two thousand fourteen. Um, when I took over in two thousand seventeen, Tiger approached and said, hey, after the building report came out, there were a lot of issues with it, and Tiger asked, do we have funds to help, uh, the renovation? At the time, we didn't. And in two thousand nineteen, the land trust, uh, expressed interest in renovating it, which our board approved, and we were moving forward, and they, they, uh, decided not to go through with that and do their own plans, which was fine. And so then in two thousand twenty, I went back to Tiger and said, hey, we have a, we have the funds now, and we have a need. Uh, our preschool program, specifically the twos, uh, which is our biggest wait-listed program, um, it's a perfect size for that, so that's, that's our hope, is that if it's, if it's decided to renovate, that's what we'd do with it. Um, the next slide is important, um, because it shows you what the inside of the building looks like today.
Oh, my goodness. Where is this on the property?
If you drive in,
Yep.
Uh, your visitor centers, oh, I'll get your
To the right.
It's on your right.
Mm-hmm.
On your left, there's a middle, uh, green with a little circle around it, it's right in the middle of that, so it's pretty front and center.
Okay.
There's lots of trees around it, so you may
We have not trimmed the trees, so that you can't see this. Uh, we have a landscaping plan for that. This happened within the last year, so when, when Tiger put it on the, the budget two years ago, the roof was intact, it was there. Now we're in a position where, I mean, I think it's, it, it, it's either renovate or it has to be taken down, so I, I just, at this point, it's a safety issue, there's kids that have access to the building, so we really think, not inside the building, sorry.
Yeah, you didn't, that was not exactly what I
Around the outside, they, you know, kids can still, uh, get, you know, near it, so I think we're at a point, one way or another. I'm here today to express that we're interested in keeping it, but, you know, this will go through all those, those processes and see where it lands, so.
Is it historically relevant? I mean, as
It is an original, it's an original estate building, so I, 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 I'm not going to speak for, uh, Tiger with that, uh, but, you know, of, as far as what to do with historic buildings within town parks, I mean, that's
It, it, it was the laundry building.
It was.
I mean,
Laundry house.
And, you know, having, having spent a lot of time with this, the buildings in town, and we inherited, you know, when we took over these estates and made them parks, which is all great, right? There's a lot of, you know, uh, kind of
Hell buildings.
Buildings that were used for estates in the old way you used to run that don't necessarily have an application for us as a town, you know, so, um, Hey, Bill, can you talk about, and I know we've talked about this for years, okay? So you talk about the twos program. If, are you gonna go to that? I can wait.
Oh, just
Go ahead. Like, like, how many kids, how many hours would people be in this building, how many days a year? It's what, twelve hundred square feet? It's small, right?
It's small, which is specifically why, uh, the twos, because based on licensing for that program, you can only have, it's a one to four ratio, which is the same as daycare, so it's, it's, it's like the YMCA where they have that space, they can only have eight kids, that's all due to licensing.
Sure.
So this building would fit our twos program, which was also, last year, we had about forty families on the waitlist, and so the building could house two classes, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then a Tuesday, Thursday, so that's what this chart is. Sixteen kids throughout the, that the year, uh, we can, um,
Like a total of sixteen kids?
Correct, but that's, in, in any other, you know, classroom, you know, it's, it's the same sixteen kids in any of our classrooms that can utilize that throughout the year.
But so, ju- does a kid come every day? Do they come?
There's a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and a Tuesday, Thursday.
Oh, so it's eight and eight?
Kids, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, eight kids on the Tuesday, Thursday. And also, it would be perfect for our summer Little Explorers. Little Explorer is a mommy and me program, and they don't really have a home right now, so we'd love to give them a home. They're in the greenhouse right now, which is also the next building I'll be talking about. Um, from a revenue side, uh, if we have this program, which we believe we can fill, uh, we believe we can net between those two programs around seventy thousand at a hundred percent capacity, about sixty, uh, about sixty thousand with an eighty-five percent capacity, which is how we would budget it. Um, and so, yeah, we, we have a, we have a need, we, it would generate revenue. Again, this is part of the larger discussion when it comes up to a capital improvement and whether Town agrees to do that, uh, but now you all know that for the nature center, we would like to see it saved, we have a use, and that's our hope. If the town, uh, decides on something else, we'll, we'll go on to Plan Bs and Cs, but the one thing is, we don't have any more licensable space on property. Uh, we've, we've filled it as, throughout all the buildings as, as every room that we can, so we are out of licensable space, this is an opportunity for that. And we would like to see the building saved. That's our
How many hours does somebody go to a twos program?
Uh, the Monday, what, the, the groups go from nine fifteen to eleven thirty, so it's a two and a half hour.
That's pretty traditional, that's my, my twos.
Yeah, it's, it's mostly to do with their capacity to actually stay in, and if you go past that, then you have to build a naptime and gots and all that, so we stop it.
So it'd be used ten hours a week?
Uh, if you did the, I'll, I'll trust your math.
Two hours. Yeah, and you're not, yeah, right, you're not talking about an afternoon program, you're talking about just
Just the morning for now. Uh, the summer, it's the same thing, it's just a few hours for that. Um, so, yeah, any, any more questions on the Audubon House? I mean, the picture, I think the biggest thing was we needed to, it, it can't sit anymore.
Yeah.
Uh, it's gotta do one or the other, and, uh, I'm sure that will come up in budget season, so now you have that background.
Is that, is it an octagon building? Like, is it round or is it actually square?
It's a rectangle, yeah. And it does have a bathroom, and it has all the old, uh, you know, the plumbing and the, the wirings there.
Yeah.
It requires significant renovation, I mean, you, you saw, I mean, that's, yeah, it would, uh, but at least in Tiger's opinion, uh, when we talked last, it was, the, the building is still salvageable, and it's, it's still savable. But again, this is part of a larger conversation. So moving on to our next building, which is not, uh, not as immediate, the roof is not caved in. Um, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I, I was getting ahead of myself. Um, this is an important thing, I, I, I always want to try to tie, uh, what our revenues do to the actual overall nature center. So a piece of paper in front of you, uh, we have compiled over the last five years, every capital improvement that we've made, uh, with our own money, so this is all nature center dollars. This is anything we make above our break even, we put back into the plant and back into the organization. Um, in the last five years, we've put in over a half million dollars worth of these capital improvements, these are just some of the pictures of, uh, around property, um, of the different projects we've done, different roofs, the boardwalks were quarter million dollars, I know you all, I mean, the boardwalks are expensive through wetlands, uh, because the footings, uh, are, it's a thousand dollars apiece for like eight or ten feet, and you can start adding that up, and that's how you get such a big number. Um, so, besides that, we do annual maintenance, we have our own grounds and facilities director who spends all his time maintaining, maintaining the property and the buildings, and we pay that salary and benefits. And then we contract out for our land management plan, uh, which we, uh, have been doing for the last four years. Uh, designed it, and it's a habitat restoration program that's, um, focused on native plantings, and we don't, and without the use of chemicals, that's just something we chose to do. Um, and then on the front end of the property, as you're coming down the driveway, uh, we've also contracted out, we usually have a seasonal employee who's just focused on that, and now we've moved to a company, and, um, they have been beautifying and maintaining all of that front end, so that's outside of, you know, any public works effort, that's just in, in conjunction with them. Um, and just so we're clear, the, the public work still does do work in the park, they, they mow the grass, uh, they plow the roads, uh, in the winter, and then anytime, you know, something's beyond our control, uh, I, I can go to them and say, hey, we need some help, and, um, you know, that, that's how that partnership works, but we maintain most of the property with our volunteers, uh, you know, hundreds of volunteer hours a, a year. Um, if you average all that out, we're spending about two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year on capital improvements and maintenance, and it totals about one point two million in the last five years. So when I'm trying, what I'm trying to really outline here is, we're able to do all this because of programs like the preschool, so when I'm saying that this, I'm trying to connect those two dots, and that's how we got there. So the more money we can make, the more money we can put back into this, and most of this is, is for public use, so, um, that's our contribution. Now I'll move on to the greenhouse, unless there's any questions on that. All right. Uh, this was built in nineteen eighty-two, uh, and it is a building that won an awards when it was first built, and it was the talk of the town, and basically its design has not stood the test of time, so, uh, the temperature regulation systems have all failed, and now we have a greenhouse that we can't have a growing program in, which is a problem. So we're using it hodgepodge, like, uh, last week, all the, the Beautification League and Garden Club were in there to do all the wreaths and the, you know, so we use it as we can, there's a classroom in there, we're able to use for summer camp, but and the only thing we can grow are succulents, because when it's a hundred and ten degrees in the summer, that's the only thing we can grow, so there's a succulent farm in there currently. Um, so current problems, I pretty much outlined them, the temperature regulation, you see those discolored panes of glass, that means the seals have broken. Uh, the shades, this, the motors and the systems are broken and not operable. Um, lighting, fans, you just can't regulate the temperature, so you can't have a reasonable growing, uh, system in there. Um, also, just the general design, uh, the functionality, it's a very, um, segmented building, so it's, we would want to make it multipurpose, where we could have events, we could have lectures, we could use it for more of the things that, um, we need it for, and right now, it's just not designed really well for
It's awkward.
It is, that's a good word, awkward building. Um, so these are just a few of the photos. Um, one of the issues that will come up is, that building's not in ADA compliance, there is a ramp on the side, but it was built before the ADA laws, so it's actually not, uh, compliant, so, you know, that, that whole ramp, and that's something that, um, we asked Tiger to get a quote for, it serves no purpose other than taking up a bunch of space, and it is that, that, um, that rust and everything is the underside of that, so that rust and everything is the underside of that. So we're looking to remove that and start this process of just changing over the building. Um, and so that ramp, we're gonna hopefully remove. One of the ideas that we have is instead of putting an elevator in, because it's not ADA compliant, it's just this kind of landing up top, if you've been in there. And if you remove, if you make the second floor only accessible to staff and or storage, then you can bypass the need for an elevator. And so we're, we've been talking about that of, of a way to avoid that. And also removing that middle staircase uh, would open up the room. And there's these two step downs that make it not ADA compliant. So if you fill that in, take the middle staircase out, now you can open it up. That does not solve any of the temperature regulation stuff. Um, so that's something we've been starting to gather quotes on and.
Hey Bill, I know it's early, but do you guys envision kind of the same shape? Uh, you know, the same, you know, the angle you have and, you know.
No, that was one thought of, do you, do you take it down to the, the, the base and, and build a different building on there? We would like to see it maintained as a greenhouse. Um. And I'll, I'll go into our future, future use. Um. And my, my vision for that, pollinator pathway is a very big thing in our town and involves public works, conservation commission, nature center, planning, new Canaan, garden club, beautification league, library, grace farming, they're all in this group. My vision, and I've talked to a lot of these groups about this, is this would be that hub for that. And actually harvesting native seeds, propagating them in this greenhouse, sending all those native plants out into New Canaan and giving all of those groups space to utilize that. And that's my vision for it. I think it fits everything we're trying to do and and I know these groups would be interested. There's no public greenhouse, certainly in New Canaan. It's not a very uh common thing. So that makes sense to us being the community learning center we are. And so that's our future. Uh, but all that requires dollars and that's where we'll be coming to town eventually of partnering with us to make that happen. We anticipate a capital campaign for this project uh to raise money for that. Uh, when it comes to our town ask, you know, that's what we'll talk with Tiger about. You know, when it comes to ADA compliance or the bare bones of the building or HVAC systems, those traditionally would fall with the town. So our hope is that we compile all that and then we figure out how we can um share that and have a plan moving forward. But we're not, we're not ready for that yet. I just.
That's good.
That's what we want to present in. Uh, the immediate one is the Audubon House, which has to be renovated or, or taken down. And in my opinion, which I'm, I'm no, I'm no builder. So I would ask some other opinions on that too. Um. So yeah, the, the fixing of the temperature regulation, this last thing I'll say about it is this involves new glass, um, new shades, new lighting system. The old motors are all outdated. So we've gotten a couple of quotes and we're talking five hundred to seven hundred thousand for work like that. Um, so yeah, that on to the ramp being removed and all that, you know, we're, we're going upwards of a million or over to, to everything I just said. And like I said, we're, we're trying to get on this early, so we don't have the Audubon House happen. So yeah, that's where we are. And also when it rains really hard, it's raining in the building, just in a few spots. So it's watering the, some of the plants.
So, so this is basically, you guys are evaluating it this year and, and we're kind of potentially putting a placeholder in the capital plan for not this year, the next year, the year after, just because, you know, we like to build the capital plan out over time. It's perfect.
That's why we're here. And um, again, one's more immediate. This one's more long term, but we're gathering it now and and we're starting to, you know, put some funds away so we can go towards stuff like this. Um. And thank, thank you for your time.
There, there must be specialized people you have to bring in for greenhouse. It's not your regular contractor, right?
One, one of the companies, uh, one of the quotes we got is five hundred and fifty thousand euro, because it's a Dutch company that does this. And they're one of the only companies in the world that takes an existing footprint of a greenhouse and retro custom fits it with that. So not a lot of companies do that. And one of the other companies says, yeah, we can build you a greenhouse, but they're going to start from fresh. They're not going to take our design and do it. Um.
Did you look at that? Like the, the, you know, the retrofit versus build new cost?
Build new, uh, the one guy just basically with the footprint said, I can build you a new grounds for a million dollars. And that would just be wiping out the whole top and just building up a new one. And so we are open to a lot of options. We, again, the vision for what the future of that building is, I, I explained, I'd, I'd love to see it for um, that, that hub for that group and really pushing um the native plantings, which is something the town has adopted, which a lot of people uh have gotten behind. So and, and we're, we're in on it. So.
But I, I think Dan's point is, is, is good there because it's, it's one of those like, all right, it's a building that didn't stand the test of time. So I mean, you guys will figure it out, but so does it make sense to retrofit something that didn't stand the test of time or if it's the same cost, look at something new. Well, we'll leave that obviously with you guys.
Uh, I mean, any of these discussions, it's not our building. We, we raised the funds for it. We built, we paid for it and then it becomes a town in New Canaan building. So any of these discussions are going to be together anyway. So uh, we're open to those conversations.
As someone who renovated an old. It definitely costs twice as much as building new.
If, if, if that's where we land, and I mean, there's a lot of positives to that, that route. So I'm, uh, the, the one thing to consider, um, you know, uh, someone, uh, you, uh, you all know Peter Hanson. His, his first wife was uh, the head of the board at that time, and she was instrumental in building that building. So there are people in town and families that around who fundraised for that building for that. And we want to be sensitive to, to them as well. I'm just putting that out there as something we're considering.
Always good to know.
Yeah. My next stop's Port of Finance. I'm going to do the same thing. So they're all aware and then Town Council. And then budget season, we'll talk to Tiger.
Yeah, but the heads up is great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey Bill, while we have you, I just want, I just want to thank you for, it's been six years, but it's amazing what you've done at the nature center. So it's, it's a short period of time in the history of the nature center, but all the work you've done and your family living there. And, you know, I, I've stopped by there at all hours and you're out there doing all kinds of things. So thank you for all you've done.
Good things.
Good things, all good things, all good things. But the programming and, and your stamp on, on the nature center, you are the nature center, you're the face of it. So we can, thanks you very much for all you've done.
Appreciate it.
Great job. You're also really involved in the community. Every time we turn around, you're at a meeting or at an event or whatever, you're, you're out there. So well done.
Cannot, they, they, they're always remembering it because I just keep popping them. So they can't forget the natures. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on to municipal solid waste. Um, Tiger and Don Smith.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm uh, I'm joined by Don Smith, our superintendent of solid waste. Uh, so we're here to present a, a new contract for our municipal solid waste or garbage hauling. Uh, we had been in a series of a five-year contract. That five-year contract is expiring as of December thirty-first. So we went out to bid. Excuse me, we received three bids. This bid we did a little bit differently. We did it in a two and a half year range to try to then coincide with the fiscal year. This is the one bid that we actually have that's outside the fiscal year, meaning that it splits in the middle. So we're trying to um, have everything end on the June thirty instead of ending on December thirty-first. That'll give us better, you know, budgeting plans. Um, excuse me, so we went for a two and a half year, excuse me?
I said, Ann, thanks you for that.
Yeah. Well, it's easier for us too, trust me. So the um, um, so then uh, we went for a two and a half year bid and uh, we came forward and um, Murphy Road Recycling, which is also American.
All American.
All American. Um, was the low bid. Their uh, their bids came in for the first, the last six months of this, uh, the first six months of the contract at a hundred and eleven a ton. And then for the next two years after that, staying at a hundred and eleven a ton. Enviro Express had been our um a hauler for the past ten years, two separate bids. And they came in at a hundred and six, then one eleven, then one seventeen. And the delta between the two became a twenty-four thousand dollar difference between uh, Murphy Road and Enviro, Murphy Road being the low bidder. Um, it is a market change from what we are paying at present. Um, at present, we're paying ninety-four dollars and fifty cents um, a ton going out. But if we looked at our uh, our previous bids, meaning our last five-year contract, the numbers that came in for that contract, the first year's bid, meaning the five years ago, was at ninety-nine dollars a ton. Where so Enviro was much less at that point in time. So we saved a, a lot of money. I won't say a ton of money, but we saved a lot of money going forward up until this point. And now there's a price correction as a, as, you know, once we go forward with another contract, there seems to be a price correction. And there was a price correction for both Enviro and All American. Um, so while there is a, there is a big delta between the two and we'll be looking at, um, you know, having to find some monies in this year's budget to satisfy um, the shortfall. We're adding that money into our next year's um, uh, fiscal budget at present. So that will be uh, current throughout. But at present, what we want to do is just um, award this contract to All American. Don met with them. Um, can, we had concerns about where they were going to haul, where they were going to dump, based upon the nature of how um the state is going at present, as far as not allowing or charging for municipal solid waste to leave the borders of the, of the state and also charging per mile for the haul within. They have a place within uh, within the state that they're working with. And regardless of the uh, of the nature of how the, the next two years falls within the state, they have areas where they can bring it and our number will stay at a hundred and eleven. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So that was, those were our concerns, where the.
So it's, it's hauled and disposed of within the state of Connecticut. Right? Is that right?
Uh, it's either going to be Keystone, Pennsylvania, or the burn plant in Bridgeport. But if there's a problem, then there's a couple of other places they have options for also.
He has the option to go with either, but you know, but he pays a, he pays a fee if he leaves the state. That's on him, not on us.
On him.
Yeah, once they pick up, the responsibility is on them, right?
Correct. But we just, we wanted, right. We just wanted to be sure if, you know, the nature changes or the state changes rules. And, you know, and he was only going to say Pennsylvania and the state said, oh, by the way, that's going to be fifty dollars a ton to leave. Then it would come back and try to charge us. He has other areas within the state that he could satisfy our, our contract with. That was our concern was that if the state can mandated another fee, so to speak, to then keep the municipal solid waste within the state, would that affect the town? And uh, he's saying it's a guaranteed hundred and eleven across the board for the two and a half years. So that was, those were our, and those were our concerns at the time.
So is that like a seventeen percent increase from ninety?
I didn't do the mathematics on that, but.
But that's just kind of what the cost, that's just what it is, right?
Right. It's a.
As of July of last year, Wilton was paying one twelve a ton already. So it's, everybody's going up and up.
So can I ask a question in terms of, are we generating more or less tonnage? And it would certainly seem to the extent that we can reduce our tonnage.
We're pretty.
That's going to help.
We're pretty standard. We were, we were in the seventy-five hundred ton range around twenty-eleven. In twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-one, we were at seven thousand tons. That was a bump up from six thousand because of COVID. And we're seeing it's coming back down again. So we're, we're, we estimate every year at seven thousand tons. You are correct. It would be nice to see if we could get more, you know, uh, moved over to the recycling side or just reduction of itself, you know? Um, we, we have a successful food composting program that, you know, if that tends to grow, we would see, you know, those numbers go down as well. The only difference is the fact that we also, we charge a fee for people to come in. So the private haulers come in, they actually have to pay a fee to dump on our floor. We make sure that that fee is actually higher than what we're paying going out, right? So.
Right. So a little doubt.
A little bit, we're a little bit higher. So there's a, so while it's a large number, there's also still a large number coming in as far as the revenue side of um, of the equation. So what the private haulers bring in, they're um currently paying um, ninety-five dollars a ton. We're going to have to look to come under to a hundred. Hundred now, that's right. That was just, we just did that. So they're up to a hundred. So we'll be looking to have to change that fee to then stay once, you know, because there'll be a delta now, they'll be tipping at a hundred and we'll be hauling at a hundred and eleven. We want to go tipping at a hundred and fifteen and hauling at a hundred and eleven. So we'll be bringing that back to you um, for that change. But that's so, there is a, you know, there is a push and pull there as well. So.
Yeah. So even though, even though our cost of disposal is going up, our net expense to the town is not going up at this rate.
Quite possibly. If we went to one fifteen, you'd see some of these larger companies go to another facility to dump their trash anyway.
Right, right. You might see them start to shop around as well to go back, you know? The, but yeah, you're, it will be, you know, it's going to be pushed back off to the, you know, to the resident itself, but that, that's the nature.
Right.
And then will our passes also go up and then?
Excuse me? We're, that's another, that's a discussion for when we come up with our fee memo as to whether or not the, the board would like to, that's been a, it's been an ongoing debate. When we, we first initiated the, the sticker fee, we had it for a year or two and then it was taken away, meaning that it came back to being free. And then after that, we, we instituted the fee again, and then we went to this split fee. Our feeling has been that yes, it should probably increase because it's forty-five dollars for someone who has a private hauler, seventy-five for someone who doesn't. Um, but that doesn't cover the town's costs at seventy-five dollars, right? So now we'll be paying um, a hundred and eleven per ton to go out. Household generates around a ton and a half of garbage. So now you're at about a hundred and sixty-five dollars. And we're charging the person seventy-five.
Yeah.
Right. So, you know, that is one of the questions that we've had before the board in the past is to whether or not to then stay, you know, current with what is actually being charged. You know, what is being, what the town is paying to charge the resident back, you know? Um, because the private hauler resident is being paid, is, is being charged, right? Is picking up their end, but the, the sticker is not the people who come in actually utilize the facility or not. So that'll be a discussion during, we come with a fee memo during the um, our discussion for uh, the next fiscal year or our budget. And we can, you know, we can listen to your concerns or your comments at that time and amends as, as needed.
I mean, on so many levels, if we can get people to focus on the level of generation. And if we can reduce that, so it's better for the environment, it's better for people, it's better for the taxpayers. And so I think the progress we continue to make on that is to benefit everybody.
That's on the reduce side.
Exactly. Yeah. So you have less to transport. Yeah.
That's correct.
Keep swapping at swap shop.
That's right.
It's, it's going quite well so far, you know?
Good.
The uh, they're, they're, they're being asked to uh, open for additional days, which is a good thing. So the need is there, the want is there. So we'll see.
Good. Yeah, people seem to love it.
More questions? All right. So I am asking for approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a two-year and six-month agreement with it, they are called Murphy Road, not All American.
Yeah, that's.
Why is that?
One of their. Murphy Road runs the recycling and transportation. We're all Americans, the ones goes out and picks it all up.
Okay.
Whatever their business, that's, that's.
Great. All right, sorry. Uh, so Murphy Road Recycling beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, costs associated with the agreement are as follows. Six months at a hundred and eleven per ton. Year one at a hundred and eleven per ton and year two at a hundred and eleven per ton. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Some of.
Steve.
Second.
Amy, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Right, Tiger.
Thank you.
Dump truck purchase.
The uh, so this is a, an interesting situation, um, whereby we had, the board had originally approved a contract with Jangris Ford for a hundred and ninety-two thousand, hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents for Ford F-six fifty SD dump truck. Unfortunately, after a long period of, of actually being told that um, the truck was on order and it would be coming forthcoming, we were told that the truck had never been ordered. Um. So we are where we are. So um, we went back and researched other Ford dealers and other vehicle types that would satisfy the needs of the department. And uh, we found a very reputable contractor at Hartford Truck Equipment. Um, so we would like to cancel the uh, the order with Jangris Ford. Um. And go forward with a purchase of a different vehicle, a slightly smaller vehicle, an F-six hundred SD. But this will actually has the same hauling capacity, same power, but different turning radius. So the turning ratio is a little bit tighter. So we can actually make, make better turns. And this vehicle is actually utilized in our downtown for plowing. So it would be a much better uh, vehicle for us to operate within the downtown structure. Um, and this will be for, instead of a twenty-twenty-three, it'll be for a twenty-twenty-four F-six hundred SD dump truck. Um, purchase price is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three twenty-six, seventy-six. And we currently have the monies available. Once we cancel the order with Jangris and close the PO, we can reutilize the funds. But I would very much like to cancel the order with Jangris Ford.
I have a question on this one.
Sure.
So only because, you know, it's, the original purchase was for, you know, twelve, it was eighty-nine, thirteen thousand dollars more for a truck. Um. So when you're evaluating what vehicle you want, and it sounds like this one will serve your needs, why did we not look at a, a, a less expensive truck to begin with?
Well, this is, well, if you want to come up, this is actually less expensive than the original. So original, than the original, original. So just so you we were looking at a two-wheel drive dump trucks. The, so you want to?
The, the original trucks, we, we, we were running in town now, our full-size six-wheel dump trucks. And um, because of COVID, uh, the price of trucks went crazy. I mean, we're, we're going from one eighty to two hundred. Now they're one two thirty-eight, two forty. the price of trucks went crazy. I mean, we're, we're going from one eighty to two hundred, now they're one two thirty eight, two forty. So we, we actually started to try to think out of box a little bit. And then we said, I originally wanted a six fifty because I thought it was a, it would be a cheaper truck than a freight freightliner. But in learning more about it, and when he canceled the order, it isn't it isn't small enough to help us out in town, so for, to, we'd be much better off with that, with a freightliner M M one to do a full job than a one that doesn't have the turning radius of a.
I don't know what an M one freightliner is.
An M one freightliner is one of the smallest trucks that can work a thirty in storm. So so we went from a six fifty to a six hundred because it's on a five fifty chassis, which means it has a turning radius of a pickup truck. So we decided we've had two large trucks in town forever, twenty five until twenty seven, they're full-size trucks. And it's kind of crazy when you're in there in the middle of rush hour trying to plow in sands. We decided we would try to go with a six hundred. And it, we, we can still put a, a, a ten-foot plow on it, same-sized plow. So we're going to buy one of these and we're so it's coming in at a hundred and eighty thousand rather than two forty. And then if this one works, we're going to do one more for, because we have two trucks in the center of town. We're going to do one more for twenty seven, for twenty five truck. But we want to get this truck in and make sure it works.
So this, this truck, the one that we initially did and now the replacement, this was trying a new approach on a plowing truck.
Yes.
Because things went, got so expensive.
Trying to size down a little bit because it's in the downtown area and because pricing went crazy, and you'll see that in.
So was the pricing more or was the you, the, the need for smaller truck, or they both drive it? Which drove the decision?
One forced us to think outside the box, which then, then it, then it started making sense, like, why are we running big trucks in the center of town? However, you don't want to, when you need a tank, you, you need a tank, you get a thirty in storm, you need everything you have to get it out of the way. So we can't go with all small trucks or anything like that, but.
So you have two big ones, right?
We have more than two big ones, but yeah, the problem too is that, you know, at the time when there's one thought of being, keeping your, your fleet similar, right, so that you can actually then, Mo, if he needs to, if a truck breaks down, he can actually take that truck, you know, and send somebody else into that area. Right now, if we size down on a truck, it's one less that he could send into the areas that, you know, we're, we need a full-size truck, say. So you can't size all of them down. We're looking at sizing a couple down because of pricing and because of the nature of where they're working, but we couldn't size them all down. But there is a thought to keep your truck, your truck fleet similar across the board, so then you can then deploy as needed, if you follow me.
Everything's fine when everything's working, but when you start getting break breakdowns and now you got smaller machinery and stuff, now you start getting into, oh, boy.
Right, because there's some areas that we actually have to send a large truck in it and a low boy into that area to go work. So there's some, some, some areas that are just too big.
And they all remember the roads we don't plow.
So, so these trucks, I mean, they're not just used for plowing, right? Because I know in the past, there was like a one, you got one truck, we got the truck and it had all these different
Attachments.
Attachments, like Lego attachments to change out what it could do. So these, when they're not used for plowing, right, what are they used for?
We're usually doing drainage work and dump, dump, you know, whatever we need to truck for general, or.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's not a full-size truck, so we don't need a full-size truck, so we.
We have a thing called in, in, in body sanders now, where we used to have to take a sander and put it in the trucks, and now they have plates. So you flip plate down, you can dump rocks in it, it looks like it's going to snow, you open the plate up and put sand in, it's salted.
It's a very versatile truck, very versatile bed.
But it all costs money.
So this is a versatile truck?
Yes, what we used to have before, as Mo said, was you had a dump truck and you put a sander in it, then you have to take the sander out to be able to utilize it. We don't have to do that anymore. The bed and the, you know, the bed and the body are, are, could be used for everything, right, you know.
Like a hook, like almost like a hook body where you just, whatever we want to put on there.
Yeah, this one's always in.
Oh, it's in there.
So i- if it's, if it's forecast of snow at four o'clock afternoon, I got to finish a drainage job at two, two o'clock, I can flip these trucks over without loaders and chains and.
Yeah, you can't run one of the big plows on this truck, though. This would take its own plow, or is it? Do we, so our, our, I mean, our plows are going to be interchangeable then? Or is this got a specific plow to it?
It, it would, well, it, it would be a ten-foot plow. So it would be too big for our F three fifties.
Right.
And not big enough for our other trucks.
So this takes a special.
Yeah.
Does that, is that included in the number here?
Yes.
Okay, good. And the sander and everything that you need is included, okay. So this is completely outfitted, okay. Good.
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Hartford Truck Equipment in the amount of one hundred seventy nine thousand, three hundred twenty six dollars and seventy six cents for the purchase of a twenty twenty four Ford F six hundred S D dump, dump truck. This replaces a previously approved purchase of one hundred ninety two thousand, one hundred fifty eight dollars and thirty cents with Genghis Ford due to supply delays. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Hey, when will you get this truck?
Amy wants a ride.
No, 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 but is this for this season? I'm just curious.
Hopefully.
They have an instruction.
Ask Steve when she gets the truck, so we don't know.
It takes forever. I mean, it takes forever. It's unbelievable.
Yeah.
That's why I, I handed them the.
They have it, right?
No, no, I handed them a P P O, the first people in January. And he told me two months ago that it was a couple of weeks out. Then he asked me like, I was getting a, if I want to cream, cream my cocoa coffee, he said, that truck hasn't been ordered. I, I think he sold it. That's what I'm told, that's what they do.
But so is this truck available? That's my question.
Is available, yes, it's coming in, but it's not on the lot.
Okay.
It, it's.
So if they have somebody willing to pay more, we might lose it, is that what you're saying?
Hopefully not. Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, hopefully not with this vendor. That vendor, that's exactly what we think happened. That, that was the problem. That's why we're looking at no longer use utilizing that vendor anymore.
Okay, okay.
So, you know, it's quite disappointing that you, you order in January and then they tell you it's coming. And then when you check on it, he says, oh, by the way, we never ordered it, like he's like.
So that's Gangres Ford.
Yeah, you need a big accent.
Yeah, okay.
So so thank you. So this next one is, is an interesting one. I wrote the, I'll have to, full disclosure, I was rushing to fit mid, make Tucker's twelve o'clock deadline, and I wrote East Coast Sign instead of A T S Solutions, All Traffic Solutions. So this had been previously approved by the previous board at twenty six thousand, six eighty three, fifty four for the purchase of two Speed Sentry installations by East Coast Sign. We're actually buying it directly from the vendor at All Traffic Solutions for twenty six thousand, six eighty three, fifty four. So I need to, I don't even have a, I have to cancel the purchase order and then, and then re-up the purchase order for, for this. But I need approval from the board to do that, because they.
Just a wording change, is that?
Just a wording change. So it is, on the memo, I wrote, I wrote East Coast Sign, and I didn't notice it until after it was approved.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion, my apologies.
Second, I'll second. All those in favor?
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, it was, it was Steve and then Deanna second, and then it was unanimous.
And I think it was Tucker, Tucker's fault, because it wasn't, you rushed up.
It's all mine, it's all my, it was all my fault. It's all good, you know, I'm the one who wrote the memos, all mine.
Oh, Tiger, thanks for the detail.
So the, this next is a, is an increase to a contract with New England Paving. We currently have a contract with them for our utility repair, utility cut repair, basically general repairs of our paving structure, driveway aprons, curbing, utility cuts, things of that nature. Due to the large amount of drainage and paving projects that we were able to complete this year, this additional work is required. Normally, we kind of run it about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand a year. This is going to bring us over that amount by fifty thousand. The funds are currently available on our pavement management program, but we had, you know, we, we paved twenty five roads in twenty five days. I've got some driveway aprons, I got to do some curbing work that we have to do. Residents are asking because there's a small gap sometimes.
Did you just say twenty five roads in twenty five days?
Twenty five and twenty five, yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah, so that was the whole downtown area. So now what you're looking at are there only, there's only one road in town that has not been paved in the past twenty years. And that's Pine Street, and that's planned to go next year, but we had a delay because of gas. So we have an entire streetscape plan for Pine Street next year. Every other road has either been paved or has a thin overlay on it. Harrison, Millport, and Littlebrook all have a thin overlay on it that was paid by Aquarian because of the work that they were doing, and next year, those will be milled and paved and done. But everybody else in town is perfect.
I've noticed it, it's very smooth, it's lovely.
We have a couple of trenches in, that are settling, Weed Street, West Road, where the new Aquarian work was done, and a couple of problems with Eversource Gas in town that, that you heard the call this morning, Deanna, so. So nonetheless, we'll fix those as well, but overall, we have a, you know, our network is complete, which is nice. But this will, this will help us satisfy these concerns that we have as far as tying in the, the, the tying in the driveway apron to the, to the roadway, or then other utility patches or other repairs we might have to do in town.
Hey, Tiger, this memo says, it talks about in two thousand and eleven, it was determined that it had a cost savings which we received, the project was handled on time, material basis. So the contracts from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty three is, is what it says. So my assumption is every year we look at these contracts, it's not like a two thousand and eleven contract that we haven't.
No, no, every year we look at it, we take an analysis, and while he's doing the work, we do an analysis and see whether or not, and we look throughout the other municipalities to see whether or not it would be more cost-effective to rebid, you know, or should we stay on a time and material basis? And given the fact of how we're, we're being brought or having the contractor move from different location to different location, in a day, he could go to four different locations. It's much more cost-effective to be paying on a time and material basis than would be on a unit price basis as far as that goes. So that's, that was the original.
It is also more timely, like, you know, if you bid each one out, this is quicker to be go, you know, these six spots versus having to pre.
You're correct, that's exactly right. If I get a phone call from a resident, like I got last night, I got two, you know, as far as when is my driveway apron being done, I don't have to go out there and have a guy give me a bid on that driveway apron and say, hey, go out there and take care of that driveway apron, and, and then it's satisfied underneath this contract.
They are the best.
Moses said they're, they are the best. We haven't, I, I spoke about this previously, but the, since two thousand and eight, they've been doing work for us. And since two thousand and eight, any of the work that they've done as far as a driveway apron, a curb, or utility cut repair, I've never had a call back and I've never had a complaint, ever.
Good.
So the residents have always been satisfied with their driveway apron or the curbing, and the utility trench has never settled on them. So I can't, that can't even speak more highly than that at that point in time.
That's great.
It's basically, you set it and forget it. They come out, they do the work, and then we don't have to worry about it again.
Wish we could use a verb in it.
Okay, any other questions? All right, and I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to continue an agreement with New England Paving in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the pave twenty twenty three localized repairs, phase three project. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, sorry.
Second.
Sorry.
Either.
Pick, pick Tucker. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Appointments. Hello, I see Bob Komp, I don't see Komp. Okay.
I think you have to let me in. Tucker, there we go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, well, thank you for being here. I see that nice Christmas tree in the back, Bob, that's nice, festive.
Lot of work.
So does anyone, anyone have any questions before we move to approve the nomination of these individuals? Yes, yes, so these are alternates that would be moving into full-time Board of Finance position. So they would be taking the place of Amy's departure and Judy Neville, who just rolled aside in the last meeting, so her term is over and she's not going to continue. So any questions before I go for the motion to approve?
I just say I've worked with both these guys for years, they're both terrific, so the town's really lucky to have their services.
Yeah, great, I think, yes, thank you, Bob. I've watched you open action and appreciate all your service to the town.
Yeah, pretty good, big shoes to fill, guys, so you ready for that?
We'll try, we'll try.
I, I've known both these guys a long time, I can't think of two better, better people. Actually, I've known Bob a long time, actually, I won't say how long because we graduated from high school together, same class, but great, great guys, thank you for your service and, and all you do on the Board of Finance. You guys are a great team.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Well, we'll make this quick then. If I could get a motion to approve the following appointments for the Board of Finance, appointment of Robert Hamel and Cole Dobbin as regular members for a term ending November fifteenth, twenty twenty seven. Subject, oh, sorry, subject to Town Council approved, approval. Motion, Steve, Amy, all in favor, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Happy holidays.
You too.
Take care.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, moving on to overpayments, you have on your tablets the list of overpayments. And if there are, are there any questions before I ask for, they're mostly auto overpayments, so any?
Yeah, just reading them into the minutes, it's motor vehicle, it's four thousand, there's nineteen requests at four thousand, seven hundred and fifty eight dollars and forty three cents.
So could I have a motion to approve the refunds for tax overpayment?
So moved.
Steve, Amy, second, all in favor, it's unanimous. Thank you. And then you have on your tablets the contracts that have been approved under ten thousand dollars. Are there any questions?
Yeah, just confirming, these are all budgeted items, and we're just.
We, we now have a process in place that, they usually, if they put a, a code number or, you know, for the accounting record, if the code number is on there, it's within the budget, because otherwise it gets kicked out by the finance department. But I've also asked everyone to in pen, write that every request is within the budget.
Yeah, otherwise we just have to ask, it avoids.
Yeah, there's a lot of contracts I have, there's a lot of things I have to sign, and I have to say, I don't love signing things I don't really understand everything at this point.
Good reason.
So, anyway, so that, that's that. Selecting comments, I'd like to actually, before opening it up to my other members of the board, just to make a comment about the recent revaluation information that was sent to all residents in New Canaan. We have, you know, put out to all the press outlets in the community, information about that coming in advance of them supposedly getting them, but I understand sometimes people don't actually get their, their news as timely as we'd like, so, and it's also on our website. But Munival sent information about the revaluation that was conducted in the community. Most people are going to be, you know, are concerned about their large increases. On average, we're seeing twenty five to thirty percent increases in, you know, it's twenty five percent. We went from eight billion dollars in assessed value to ten billion dollars of assessed value. And so, but people need to understand that is not their tax bill. They, we will not have taxes ready until the Board of Finance approves the budget and sets the mill rate, which will not happen until May of twenty twenty four. So this is just a reflection of what current sales values are, where they're trending in the area. And I can tell you, Darian, every surrounding community is seeing similar revaluation. So there is information on our website, if you go into the assessors page on the town of New Canaan, so, you know, what is it, town, what is it, New, and? Newcanan.info. If you go into that website and hit the assessors tab, there is information for your individual property, and you can take a look at it. And there's also a phone number and website to our tax assessor, Sebastian Calderella. And he is prepared to answer your questions. You know, we, we were expecting this and we were, you know, trying to communicate to everyone, you know, how the process works. So, but, you know, please, if you have any questions or concerns, please reach out.
Yeah, I mean, your, your tax bill is not going up twenty five percent. This is, you know, we're going to come up with a budget that reflects the cost of operating the town, and we're just dividing that among a different basis for the property tax. So you, the tax, your effective tax base will reflect the expenses of the town, not the fact that your value of your property is up, so don't panic.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, I've already heard, I've had a couple of calls and a couple of people stopping in my office and say, wait a second, what is going on here? And And, yeah, you know, the, the good news is that everyone's homes have increased in value, but it is a little shocking when you open that letter up and you say, whoa, whoa, this is gonna be unbelievable. So it won't be that bad. I mean, I, you know, it's, if you think, if you think about the possibility of like a two percent increase, something in that, in that ballpark. And then you'll also have your, your car taxes are gonna be lowered as well based on the mill rate. So there's, there's some, you know, when you do the math at home, it won't be as bad as it looks.
Yeah, you know, the back of the envelope, it's, you know, we raised about a hundred and fifty million in revenues. Last year, we had to divide that into eight billion dollar grandless. Now it goes into ten billion grandless. So we're still going to be, you know, your taxes are gonna be very similar to what they are now.
And the Board of Finance Chair, Todd Flavieri, submitted to the media yesterday sort of a nice explanation. So, you know, I encourage people to read his letter as well. So we're on it and hopefully, you know, we can tell your friends, tell your neighbors not to, not to panic.
I, I do have one question. Is, is every property reassessment up online? Like, you know, because the people want to do is like you say, okay, this is my house. They're guessing it's this. Let me look at a house I think is similar. Is that all current right now? So is every single assessment per address current?
Yes, so if you go.
You can look around. You can check around.
Yes, if you go into the system, I went in today and checked mine just to make sure before the meeting.
Yeah.
And it is, the updated value for your property is on there. It says in a little blue box, twenty twenty-three revaluation on your field card. Or I don't even know if, it's not the field card, it's the landing page when you go into your, into your property. It, it says in a little blue box that it's the twenty twenty-three revaluation amount. So.
Good.
Okay. All right. Second meeting, guys.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
And Tiger, would, would we be able to get in the, the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, kind of an update on the playhouse? Kind of, you know, where we are in terms of the total costs and timing and opening and all that stuff. You know, it, it don't need it now, but if you could just give us an update, you know, with numbers.
Sure, yeah.
I like numbers.
Long, short answer, yes. We can, in two weeks, we can come back and give you, give you that. And then we're hoping to be able to bring people in. Just when it's a little bit safer, we can start bringing people in to kind of give you a little bit of a look as to how it's shaping out. But work is, work is ongoing. It's going well. So.
And I ran into Luke Parker Bowles at the, at the lovely, amazing holiday stroll. And they're still targeting end of April. Maybe early May, but end of April. So let's, let's keep holding their feet to the fire for that. Any other comments?
That's it. Just two feel-good stories. I'd see Mike Dynan's here in, in the house, but in the new Canaan, there was two great articles or letters. One was a woman in town who left her wallet. And, you know, I figure it, it's always nice to have a feel-good story about the Canaan. That is New Canaan in a nutshell. I mean, somebody took the time to return the wallet and she's, you know, and it's just, it's really a nice thing to, to read. So I haven't seen that letter. Please read it because it really is from the bottom of the heart. And then just Franco's Institution in town celebrating ninety years. Figured I'd mention that as well. It's just, you know, they've been part of this community for a long, long time. So congratulations to them as well. Those are the feel-good moments of the day.
Thank you. You're always good for that.
All right.
You see. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Steve, Amy, unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.